Joan had to go over and grab something, so we're gonna... This is uncomfortable over here doing her job, so we're gonna try it out though. So this is a roll call for those in attendance to the McKinley County Schools Board Meeting for September 5th, 2017. Roll call? For present.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mrs. Manuelito.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Mortensen.
Here.
And Mr. Long.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, and again, let me introduce the ROTC from Gallup High School. I'm glad they're here this evening. They're gonna do the post-ing of colors, and they will also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. ROTC, everybody stand, please.
With the flag of the United States of America, and with the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, can you lead us?
With the flag of the state of Mexico, it is simple, a perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. You can be seated. And I believe the ROTC, we have two individuals that are gonna briefly talk about what the ROTC is all about. You guys have the floor? It's supposed to be on, is it on?
Good evening. Good evening, I am Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Sean McCray, Commander of the Bengal Battalion. And we appreciate this opportunity to present our program to you. This slide shows the front of Gallup High School and our JRTC mission statement. This is information about our program, and this is our program flag. There are three areas in which JRTC is making a difference: attendance, academics, and behavior. These are three of the many ribbons that this cadet can earn. These are features of the Gallup area. These are team-building exercises. These photos show our arms and supply room. These are cadets practicing drill and ceremony. This is our color guard in action and during rehearsals. We also provided the color guard for Mayomera High School's homecoming. This is our Bengal Battalion Command and Staff. Staff cadets can only be juniors or seniors. JRTC reinforces and teaches business practices in both the classroom and in the event we These are examples of past community support. These are service learning cadets teaching the elementary students of Stagecoach and Robert Elementary how to swim. These are also examples of past school support. From left to right, we have our Class A, B, and Physical Training uniforms. These are our JRTC opportunities. This is our Fall Semester Training Plan. And this is our Spring Semester Training Plan. And these are additional values in our JRTC program. We encourage our students to participate more in extracurricular activities. This is our current status of our JRTC program. We are always looking for program support.
Do you have any questions? Board members? Questions? No questions about enlistments?
No question but just a comment. I just wanted to say thank you for honoring us with your program here and presenting the colors for us. I think it's something that is very valuable within our community, and I just wanna say thank you to you and to your instructor and to your other members that are part of this program. And I know that we do have, I don't know how many we have in our district that do the ROTC program, but I commend you all for your hard work and your dedication. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. And instructor, thank you so much for bringing your ROTC group to our meeting. And you have some fine recruits. They know the drill, and I'm sure they're gonna be enlisted in the military. That's a good occupation, to be in the military. I served two years way back in the seventies with the United States Marine Corps. So, doing a good job, sir, teaching our recruit people. Alright, thank you, this concludes our presentation. Thank you so much.
Sir, Mr. Hyatt, how many programs like the ROTC program do we have in our school district?
Right now, we have two programs, Leavitt Tahachi and at Gallup High School.
Okay, let's go down our agenda. Number two, approval of agenda, board members. Okay, motions been made by Mr. Shaw to approve the agenda. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, thank you, we approve our agenda. Let's go down to item three, the approval of the meeting minutes from the August 21st. Oh, okay, recognition.
President Long, members of the school board, and those in attendance this evening, we are excited to have the opportunity to recognize our students. We have several here tonight with their families and parents, and we really appreciate you coming out this evening and traveling this long way for many of you to join us and offering our support and our celebration for our students. But I also wanna make sure that before we do that, I also wanna recognize our parents and families that are here. You also put in a lot of hours of hard work in not only raising, but supporting the school district and supporting your students' education, so thank you. I'll turn the time over to our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Gerald Horasik, to talk a little bit about what this award is, and then we'll start calling the names.
President Long, members of the board, superintendent of the audience, I just wanna go over what the Gallup McKinley County School Board of Excellence Awards are. It's for any student in the district that exceeded expectations on the park assessment that they took last spring in ELA and math, and on the Mexico standards-based assessment science test. So any student that exceeded expectations, tonight we're doing all elementaries and some mid and high schools, and then everyone else that is left will be done October 2nd, at the October 2nd meeting. So parents, we encourage you when your child is called up to come on up and take as many pictures as you need, and if the student could come by, take their award, and then shake each member of the board's hand, and then we're gonna ask you to return to your seat, and then at the very end, when the last person's called, we want all the kids to come up and get a picture with the board. Okay, so once again, come and get your award, shake the board's hand, you can go back to your seat, and then when the last person's called, everyone come up and we'll take a big, large group photo. I do wanna thank Terry Frazier and Vanessa Duckett for really doing a lot of the work behind the scenes, putting this together. And at this time, I'm gonna introduce our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Giovanna Hanks, and our Director of Curriculum and Assessment, Dr. Michael Kabaka.
Thank you to every one of you for being here this evening. Our students are definitely the reason that all of us are here. We appreciate you coming. I am gonna call names one at a time. If the individual does not step forward, I'm gonna move on to the next name. And I am gonna go in order by school site, so I'm going to start with Amy Yozie from Cheetahge Elementary. Okay, yeah, yeah. From Cheetahge Elementary last year, and Chief Manuelito Middle School this year, Cadence Upshaw. Chief Manuelito, Alexandra Allen. Carlos Rizendez. Trey Bruner. Damian Cano. Gwendolyn Claw. Michelle Curly. Chaz Tully. So these are all Chief Manuelito Middle School. Lambert Tom. Deondra Mays. Jordan Joe. Isaiah Galavies. Alexandra Charlie. Riley Connixon. Cynthia Ruiz. Ariel Slim. Sierra Yozie. Jasmine Bassenti. Alyssa Gonzalez. Rebecca Manning. Julian Artiega. Tamisha Atencio. Now with Crown Point High School, June Penolo. Crown Point Middle School, Kiara Sloan. Also with Crown Point Middle School, Carolyn Sloan. Crown Point Middle School, Nicholas Etzide. Crown Point Middle School, Lorianna Thompson. And we will make sure all the students who were not able to make it this evening do receive their award. Indian Hills Elementary, Theodias Taugh. Jefferson Elementary, Joshua Helfenbein. Also Jefferson Elementary, Daniel Helfenbein. Jefferson Elementary, Michael Karpenski. These students are with Lincoln Elementary, Aries Divette. Delilah Nez. Filipina Pimentel. Navajo Pine, Elise Steve, Alan Gones. And Granite Lewis. Reema Elementary, Lauren Trimble. Also with Reema Elementary, Lydia Lamson. Lyric Burnson. These students are with Red Rock Elementary, Jackson Jones. Shrikar Vingala. Graviel Joseph Ampier. Pedro Acosta Azumendi. Griffin Good. Aiden Gonzalez. Jerome Adrian Rabea. These students are from Rocky View Elementary, Cheyenne Armijo. Aiden Paria. Sebastian Willie. Elijah Lopez. Following students are from Roosevelt Elementary, Emily Kukadari. Haley Williams. Students from Stagecoach Elementary, Samuel Hernandez. Theroux Middle School, Rolanda Chaco. Aiden Gishy. Cora Jones. Adella Sina. Michaela Tahhi. Dylan Butler. Students from Theroux High School, Jacob Largo. Michael Martinez. Students from Tahachi Elementary, Leandra Madrang. Ian Andrew Madrang. Tahachi Middle School students, Cassandra Costaneda. Darian Sosi. Langham Bitsoy. Amy Mitchell. Sayagai High School students, Michaela Toledo. Rosalie Sala. And Amber Billy. Thank you all so much for being patient. If we could get all students who received awards back up to the front, we would love to take a group photo for the district website. Parents, please feel free to take all the pictures you like. Thank you all so much for being patient. If we could get all students who received awards back up to the front, we would love to take a group photo for the district website. Parents, please feel free to take all the pictures you like. Another round of applause for these outstanding young men and women.
I want to congratulate all the kids that got awards. If you look at our school district, Gillum Kinley County School District, this is what our mission is, to help students achieve their goals. And I want to thank the parents that came with their children too. You are a vital part to the education of your kids. So, thank you. And we still have, I believe, some refreshments back there. So, thank you, everybody. Your presence here is important to us as the Board of Education. Yeah, thank you. Board members, we go down to item number three, approval of meeting minutes for the August 21st Board of Education meeting. What is the pleasure of the board?
I so move that we approve the minutes.
Okay, a motion's been made by Mr. Schaaf to approve the meeting minutes. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. We approved the meeting minutes of the August 21st meeting. Let's go down to item four, consent agenda items.
Sir, I motion to approve the consent item agenda.
Okay. Priscilla Manuelito has made a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah. We're approving the consent agenda items. Let's go down to item number five, study circle. We do have one public comment. Ruby Haley. Thank you.
First and foremost, I want to say that I am here as a parent, guardian of my grandchildren, not an employee of the school district, but as a parent, guardian of my grandchildren. The last time I was here, one of my children were hurt in the school bus.
Ma'am, can you please speak into the microphone so we can hear you a little better?
Okay.
Excuse me.
Maybe I'm too short. I wanted to say, thank you. During that meeting, things happened. Everything fell into place. Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Thank you, school board members. And we got to the bottom of it. And I just wanted, I've been meaning to come back to thank you for your time and for the effort that was put into the situation to resolve it. I go to school on Monday evening, so it's kind of hard for me to be here. So, I was glad that Tuesday came up. Okay, that's the reason why I'm here today is I want to say thank you for helping myself, my student, my child, and getting the issue resolved. We did get to the bottom of it, and everything was taken care of. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Let's go down to B, reports. JOM program, Carmen.
Good evening, Mr. Long, Superintendent Hyatt, and board members. Thank you for allowing us to do a report for Johnson O'Malley in the Board of Education meeting. I would like to introduce two of IUC officers, our Indian Education Officers, who are here today. They would please stand Rebecca Ness and Georgiana Desiderio. And we would like to present to you, first of all, a monthly report that we always do to you to update you on the current IUC meetings, activities, and any announcements that we think is important for you to know. In addition, we have provided to you with a packet, which is the education plan for Johnson O'Malley, which is part of our application, as well as a summary with the budget breakdown and the allowable expenditures. We also provided to you in the packet a list of our Indian Education Committee members, the schools they represent, and the chapters that they represent as well. At this moment, I would like to open for any questions?
Questions, board members, comments?
Ms. Moffett, does your organization have any specific initiatives that you're looking to accomplish this year or anything exciting that you've got to tell us about? What's happened?
Absolutely. One of the things that we're doing this year is, first of all, is we're having officer reports more frequently with the program manager. That's something that is new this year. We did have about one or two IUC officers' meetings with the program manager. This year, we want to do it a little bit more. Part of the approach this year is to have a closer collaboration between the programs, the applications, monitoring the application a lot better in terms of what we want to accomplish in our goals and objectives. So, you'll see that this year, we'll be having more officer reports with the program manager. Part of the meetings, we also finalize the agenda. We have a meeting coming up on September 10th, and we'll be finalizing everything on the agenda with the IUC officers and the program manager for the meetings. We also do some strategy planning during these IUC meetings. So, part of my work is working with IUC members so that during the sessions, and you've been to some of our work sessions, we want our parents to take the lead on a lot of these activities. And part of it is the IUC officers working closely with me so we can strategize, we can plan, we can make decisions in terms of who's doing what, who's facilitating what part of the agenda. So, really, they're taking the lead, and that's part of the work that we do between the officers and myself. Another thing that we're doing is we're changing things a little bit different the way we do. For example, we are encouraging our schools to use a lot of their travel in the first semester rather than waiting towards the end of the school year, because at the end of the school year, there's that high risk of leaving unexpended funds unused. So, we want to make sure this year that we take a more proactive approach by encouraging schools to have their funds early in the school year and then encourage them to use the funds in the beginning of the school year, since we're still far away from winter time. But, you know, it's going to get colder, so we do see a lot of schools now using the travel fund, especially during the winter time. So, this is a perfect time. The schools have upfront money right now that they can use for student travel. So, that's the strategies that we're changing to better use our school funds and make it accessible and available to the students early in the school year rather than later on in the school.
Do you have any concerns for the school year?
For this school year?
In regards to your program? And what's stressing you out about JOM this school year?
Johnson O'Malley is a very complex program.
Yes.
We are talking over, possibly over thirty, IUC members with different needs, questions in regards to their duties and responsibilities, monitoring the school. That's another exciting thing that we're doing this year is we're revising the monitoring report. So, they're reflecting right now, working on all the components of the application and aligning that very well with their monitoring report so that they know their monitoring report like the back of their hands. We're encouraging some very positive questions and dialogues between the IUC members and the principals, because really, what we want to do is we want this experience when the IUC members come and monitor the program at their school sites, we want them to come in as a win-win and end the monitoring report as a win-win. So, those are the kind of approaches. So, in helping with the monitoring report, what kind of questions to ask and how do you approach your schools and so forth, we're working on those questions so that it becomes a very, very positive and productive experience that we want to get out of these reports.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You have the questions, comments?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, sister, for providing the report for us and this information. I was asking about the new Johnson, the new Johnson O'Malley application that we sent in. And I want to say to my sisters out there that are here this evening, I'm going to try and make it out on Sunday to your meeting. I also would like to say thank you for my plaque and if I can say this right in Navajo, Bachehensin. Did I say that right? Bachehensin. Bachehensin. It means a lot to me, and I thank you guys very much in honoring me. The question that I had was, my dear sister, is I see on, when I was looking and reviewing the documentation, we still have six vacant positions open for Indian Education Committee members. What's being done to fill these positions? Is there any recruitment? And it's very worrisome to me that Theru Elementary and Theru High School are both vacant in my area. And I'm just wondering if there's what's being done to fill these positions.
Sure. In answering the vacancies, we have had one meeting so far during the principals' meeting where we provided the principals with technical support in answering any questions regarding the IUC's roles and responsibilities. Today, we had another principals' meeting. Again, we presented that information too regarding the roles and responsibilities of IUC members, but for the vacancies specifically, I'm working directly with the principals. If the principal is new, we have provided guidance in terms of how to do the elections for the IUC members. And for the new members, some of the schools, we had elected IUC members, and what happened is some of the members did not respond after numerous attempts and letters. They were supposed to come in to fill out paperwork as well as do a background check, which is required, and they did not come in. So, we gave them a deadline. After the deadline, they did not respond. So, we had to notify the principals that this year, beginning of the school year, they had to do another election. And we're hoping that the IUC members who do get elected do respond and do come in so that we can get all the paperwork in place so that we can get them on board.
Mrs. Moffett, I also know that the Navajo Nation Johnson O'Malley conference is coming up. When will that be?
That is November 19th through the 21st, Tuesday through Friday, I believe, Thursday. It's a three, two and a half day.
In September?
September, yes, this month.
Okay. Okay. Could you also provide us either a written or another verbal report on what's happening at which is Johnson O'Malley Program Nation, Navajo Nationwide?
National JOM?
Yeah. No, the Navajo Nation.
Navajo Nation, okay.
Navajo Nation.
Yeah, we can do that. And our IUC members were on the agenda for out-of-state travel. They will be presenting a work session during the conference. Our IUC members will be presenting.
Nice. Thank you. My next question is for Superintendent Hyatt. Have you seen our principals and our schools utilize the Johnson O'Malley funds more than past years?
President Long, Mrs. Manuelito, I haven't specifically seen it. I attend the meetings, we look at the reports of what's been spent and what the money's been spent on. So, I know what kind of items they're utilizing. Now, as far as on the ground, are those being implemented or used in the classroom? Can I guarantee that? No. But, that is the purpose of the funds. And so, I would expect that if they're purchasing books, that those books will be utilized, for example, in the classroom. But, one of the things that we've been working on with the IUC is trying to change a little bit how we look at those items. They are not just for the Navajo language and culture classroom. We're looking to expand that so that it's used across the curriculum in more areas. And so, I think that's going to help us do a better job at spending those funds. And then, a part of the curriculum, we hope that that fits in, integrates into the curriculum so that those supplies are being used to enhance all areas of instruction. But, yeah, we can definitely do it. We could assess that. I don't know if Carmen might have more information. She's in the schools a little more with respect to that program and those funds than I am. But, usually, principals, when they're able to spend those funds, they utilize the things that they're able to receive.
And, sir, just the reason, the reason why I'm questioning is I know it's difficult to, in the past, to get the buy-in of the principals to utilize those funding. And, you know, there was monies that were not spent that came back to the district, and we had to figure a way out to spend it. And, you know, I know there's a lot of schools and things that our school needs, and I know these are earmarked for a specific reason, but I just, I just really wish that, and I hope, that the principals and the schools are just utilizing these resources that are vital to our children.
If I could make one clarifying comment, it's also, it's also federal regulation that you do use those in the same year that they're purchased. So, if they're not using them, that would be a significant problem. But, also, last year, I think, is a good example of some data through our analysis of the expenditures. I think last year, Carmen, Mrs. Moffett, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we spent more dollars, especially out of supplies.
And towards the end of the school year, we only had about nine percent of the balance.
So, we, significant improvement last year in expenditure of the supply funds. And I think one of the reasons why they changed the expenditures for the travel and trying to push principals to use that earlier is because at the end of the year, if you're able to spend a lot of it in the beginning during the year, it's much easier to budget and make sure you expend the rest of those funds towards the end, especially when it comes to those travel funds. So, I expect it to be better this year.
Just one more thing that I wanted to share. Our JOM application every year comes in at a later time after school begins. So, we are expecting the application through the Navajo Nation to be approved by sometime late September. So, it won't be until October that we finally get an award letter and possibly early November, not until you see it before you, for the Board of Education to approve. And then, it's posted into our system where then principals would have access to it. That's not the case this year. I want to thank Mr. Hyatt and the ELT for putting money upfront so that the schools will have this money day one until we get our JOM award letter. But, all the expenditures from the beginning of the school year, money that the schools already have right now, all that will be reimbursed by the Navajo Nation. So, it's kind of like an upfront loan that we received from the district.
That is awesome. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. I mean, I appreciate that action from the business office, staking those funds. I mean, I think it shows the school district commitment level towards seeing the success of the JOM program.
And thank you to the Board of Education. The success of the program really has to do with the collaboration, authentic collaboration between the Board of Education, our superintendent, and our Indian Education Committee members. So, thank you very much.
Mr. President?
I just wanted to say, you know what?
I just wanted to say, you know, hearing all this makes me feel really good. You know, this is a first since I've been on the board. And I would like to thank administration for making that step and being able to work hand-in-hand with the I E C program and being able to put that money up front. I also appreciate the early spending because you know, I know in previous years when spending is done till the last minute, you know, they just spend it on whatever they can spend it on, just to spend the money. And it's not always the best thing that's going to be able to teach our children what they need to learn. It's just, let's just spend it and whatever. So you know, I do appreciate the early spending that you put up to enforce. But thank you very much for everything.
I have one more comment. If, we're going to be having our Region One meeting next month, and we're really looking for some entertainment to, I know we've got Zuni Schools is going to be providing a dance and Gallup is also going to be assisting. If you've got another dance group or some singers or even our Native American Club princesses to come in to do pledge, the National Anthem, or if they want to entertain, could you please spread that word for us? And we'd really appreciate for them to come and help us during our Region One meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you.
And continue to encourage your I E C members to attend chapter meetings. Normally, I get questions about J O Ms. And the other thing is, I know several months or a few months back, Dr. Tommy Lewis provided a written report. And in his report, he was talking about a four billion dollar cut to Indian education. And I don't know if you have received any information from the Navajo Nation J O M program, whether Johnson O'Malley is going to be losing funding or whatever, the impacts that it would have. So.
Thank you, just to let you know, we did send a letter out to all the chapter presidents to let them know that if they would like to invite us to do so, so we can do a report at any time, if you let them know too as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Carmen, that date is October eighteen will be our Region One meeting. Thank you, my dear sisters.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Now we go to Smed.
President Long, members of the board, we would like to move this item to the next agenda in Twin Lakes. We had miscommunication and Lolly is not here tonight. And so we would like to move on to item number three. It's okay?
Okay. Snap.
Yes, Snapsa. Lori Para and Stacy Thompson are here to give us an overview of the specific program.
Good evening, President Long, school board members. Lori Para from McKinley County Community Services Department. Thank you again for having us once more in such a short period of time. We really appreciate it. We're going to be just talking with you a little bit about one of our components from the Juvenile Substance Abuse Crisis Center, and that is our Snapsa Coalition. Snapsa does stand for the Strategic Network of Advocates for the Prevention of Suicide and Substance Abuse. And I'm going to turn it over to Stacy. Stacy is our coordinator for this program, and she's going to discuss a little bit more in detail for you.
Thank you, President Long, school board members, Superintendent Hyatt. So I did drop off a packet earlier that Joan distributed to you guys. It kind of gives you a rundown of what our program entails. For one, we do focus on prevention efforts around prescription drug misuse and underage drinking in our attendance, our small attendance. But there are some members that are here, that are in our coalition. We do have a multi-agency coalition where we work with folks from the healthcare, law enforcement, civic groups, youth-serving organizations, you know. So we're just really out there in the community. And some of the things that I also included in your packet are just some of the things that we work on. So one of them, we focus on policy review for reducing long-term suspensions and expulsions due to alcohol, tobacco, and other drug infractions. On the flip side of your page, I did include one of our banners that are posted up. With this, we leverage services through the D W I program and the J S A C program to provide services to Chief Manuelito. And the kids really, you know, have the input on what they wanted on their billboard. That is still up on Route sixty-six, right across Don Diego. So if you're traveling west, you will still see that board up, but that's just one of the projects that we've worked on. Another thing we also do is we've been educating the community on the city social host ordinance, which is also included in your packet there. And this ordinance has been in effect since two thousand and twelve. Not many people know that this ordinance exists. So we've been working as a coalition to really increase the awareness of holding property owners and homeowners responsible. So if an underage party did happen, those homeowners can get in trouble and face this ordinance. So that's one of the things we've also included, the cost, because there is a cost recover schedule that folks would end up paying for just medical services or law enforcement going to those properties. Another thing we also do is we do merchant educations with businesses within McKinley County. So one of them is our Responsible Beverage Service Model, which is just education on alcohol laws, also checking IDs, making sure that alcohol businesses are not selling to underage and they're refusing sales to minors. So we did include photos from a recent presentation that we've recognized businesses for refusing those sales to minors. And there you could see some places that were recognized was like Albertson's, Els and Bino down south, Giant up in the Ru. We had Sage Brush Liquor, Sammy Sees, Virgie. So just for your information there. And another thing we also do is just on prescription drug abuse, we do collaborate with Indian Health Service. And a lot of the things that we do is try to promote the Prescription Drug Take-Back Event, which does happen twice a year, once in April and the second in October. And your last flyer is the flyer that we'll be disseminating within McKinley County so folks know that if they have medication at home, they need to get rid of it, they want to do it safely, they can dispose at any of our collection sites. So the last page just shares information about medication, sharing is not caring, and it just gives parents, elders, information, you know, about how teens access prescription drugs. And just communication key points on what they can do to talk to their family. And then our last book, I'm not sure if many of you have seen it, but it's our Pills Can Kill Prescription Drug Abuse Handbook. This has been given out to chapter houses, given out at health fairs. We were able to go to different schools within McKinley County and drop these off so they were disseminated to students. And pretty much it just gives information about how to secure, monitor, and dispose of medication in the household. At the time when we made this book, we didn't have any drop-off boxes located in our area. So people would have to wait for these take-back days to happen, or they would have to take their medication and dispose of them in Albuquerque. But G I M C, they have two permanent drop boxes. So one's located here in Gallup at the pharmacy and then one in Tohachi. So you know, these are just some of the components that we've been working on. A lot of the time, we do have meetings that are open, well, I shouldn't say a lot of the time, every month. We do have meetings that are held on the second Wednesday at two o'clock. We do have our meetings and we travel throughout different population centers here in McKinley County. Like last month, we were in the Ru. This month for September eleventh? September eleventh, we'll be traveling, or September thirteenth, we'll be traveling down to Zuni. The month after that, in October, we'll be up in Crown Point. So it just really shows, you know, we are really trying to get around to different areas here in McKinley County to disseminate, share information about underage drinking and prescription drug misuse and abuse. So I'm open for questions if there's any, any comments?
Questions, comments, board members?
Mr. President, I just wanted to say that, you know, thank you for the information that you've provided for us. You know, it's very helpful and useful information. And I would like to maybe try and attend one of your meetings, maybe Zuni or, that I will attend just to get more info. But thank you for coming and presenting us with this info.
And if any of you want to be added to our listserv, you could just give me your email address. And I do send out like monthly announcements just to remind you of where our meetings are, what subcommittee meetings we're having. We also are on social media like Facebook and Twitter, so if you want to follow us there, you're more than welcome to.
Board members? I just wanted to say, I think this is a real valuable partnership that our district could continue to support. I know that there's times when ourselves, and I'm talking about the school district, we don't have the capacity or some of the resources that other programs within our district does have. And you know, just the referrals of, the referral system they have and also to help our children out of these addictions and even suicidal ideations, I think we, those are valuable resources that we can utilize without really burning our resources or our staff. There are professionals out there that are knowledgeable and this is their only, this is their main job. And I think if we utilize them, it's going to benefit us in the future and save our children in different areas of drugs, alcohol, substance abuse, and suicide. So I would really encourage my colleagues to continue to attend their meetings and, you know, in future dates, you know, continue the M O U, M O As that we have with them. And I just wanted to mention that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
President Long, members of the board, I want to mention really quickly, I want to appreciate that we had a chance to sit down a few weeks ago and clear up some miscommunication. And we'll be working with this entity a little more closely. And one of the things we'll talk about a little bit later is graduation rates in this next presentation after. And this is an entity that we can work with to help us in a way to curb that in a positive direction so that students are staying in school. And like Mrs. Manuelito's mentioned, it's helpful to have communities, entities like this to help us support that effort.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Yeah. Let's go down to number four, school grading.
All right. President Long, members of the board, we gave a presentation about a month or so ago when school park data came out. And we gave you a lot of information, a lot of details, a lot of information regarding growth rates and those types of things. And that was a presentation. We got through most of it, and I think we let you chew on some of that afterwards. Since then, school grades have come out, which are basically based off of that data that we presented to you. And so tonight, we wanted to give you a quick overview of school grades. I know that three of you are new with respect to school grading. And so there's hours worth of information that we could present, but I wanted to give you an overview. And I'm going to ask Mr. Herasik to help me a little bit during this presentation. He's going to go into a little bit more of the details and the dirt. But I wanted to start with, I have a PowerPoint, I've provided it for you as a handout. We also have it up on the screen. And first of all, I wanted to, I wanted to emphasize that sometimes in some school districts, sometimes we, some are, you tend to just focus on the park, which is math and reading. I just want to make sure it's very clear that there's several folk I in Gallup McKinley County schools, a more holistic approach and making sure that we're educating students. But we do receive valuable information from these scores also. And they help us to better understand, better ways that we can educate our students in this area. So tonight, I'm going to talk about school grades, but I just want to make sure it's understood that we look at lots of different factors when we, when we're looking at growth for our students. As you also know, after we got done with, or during that time where we presented and around that time, we had the Secretary of Education, Mr. Ruskowski, come out and celebrated at Turpin Elementary and also Gallup Mid. And we appreciate the support from N M P E D. And they also saw the great growth that we are seeing in Gallup McKinley County schools. So the first slide on school grade determination, just a couple, couple bullets I wanted to just go over really quickly. The school grades are basically based off of what's called a value-added model. And the primary part of a value-added model, and this is not just in New Mexico, this happens in other states that they use this system or like system. And the state here is primarily focused on growth, but as a state in Bullet Two, there's other pieces that they've added into it that affect school grades. So growth is one factor, but also they factor in proficiency. And so, and based off whether a student is proficient or whether they are not proficient. And I'll talk a little bit more detail about that later. And then also, there's other indicators, there's comparisons to other schools. There is, there are things such as graduation rates, attendance rates, and those types of things that also get factored into school grades. And there's a weighting attached to that. Also, a teacher's evaluation is based off a value-added type of model. Teachers get scores on their evaluation based off the growth of those students in their classes that they've had for a three-year period of time. And so not only does the school get graded on this type of a system, but also teachers receive part of their evaluation on this type of a system. And I also want to make sure you understand that the formula is not published. I can't dive into the formula and tell you exactly how it all works. There are some unknowns that the state does not give to us. And I'll talk a little bit more detail about some of those things in the passive and unknown and some things that have been revealed as of late. So the next slide, some of the changes that happened this year. And that's one of the unfortunate things is that we did have change. It's not a complete overhaul of the grading system, but there were some, a few little things that were changed from last year or the past three years until this year. And so there's somewhat of a reset a little bit. It's not comparing apples to oranges, but I've mentioned to a few of you and others, it's like comparing apples to pears. You know, same texture, looks, feels the same, but there's obviously a difference between a pear and an apple. And so I wanted to let you know about those. Proficiency is weighted more. And as soon as you weight proficiency more, when we're one of the lowest performing proficiency districts in the state, yet growing faster than the state average, we're going to take a hit when they raise proficiency weighting. And so some of our schools face that. I think that if we were graded, some of our schools were graded the same way they were for the last three years this year, you would have seen point growth. But because they weighted the proficiency a little higher, we're going to take a hit, we're going to take a hit on that. And that's kind of one of the unfortunate things. I can have a student grow from a first-grade reading level to a fourth-grade, let's say a fifth grader, grow from a first-grade reading level to a fourth-grade reading level, I get no points for proficiency because they're not at fifth-grade reading level, even though they grew three whole years worth. So I'll get some growth points for that, but I get absolutely no proficiency points because they never became proficient in that school year. So that kind of tells you how those two things affect school grades. Now, if a school has a student that's a fifth grader and they were at a seventh-grade reading level the year before, and now they're at a sixth-grade reading level after a year, they still get points because that student's still proficient even though they dropped in their reading level. So that can affect us dramatically. Also, in the value-added model, our schools get compared to other schools across the state. And for the last three years, for example, David Skeet, I think they were compared to about thirty different schools for the last three years. And I believe that, we don't know for sure, but we believe that they were the same schools. They never told us what schools were being compared to. And supposedly, there's supposed to be schools that have the same demographics, economically disadvantaged, and those types of things like our schools, so we could get compared apples to apples. This year, they changed the number of schools we're compared to and set that about a hundred and forty different schools we're compared to. That in itself also makes it possibly more competitive in respect to trying to gauge where we're supposed to be because we have new schools that we're being compared to. Now, this year, they did let us know what those schools are, but we don't know what the schools were prior. Also, they set a few predictors. They set predictor rates or predict marks that we are supposed to hit. They don't tell us what that mark's going to be each year. And so we know that there's an important value in proficiency, value in growth and other types of indicators, but we don't always know what the predictors are. So they're setting, P E D is setting certain marks we're supposed to hit, but we don't know what those are until, we still don't know what they are. That's kind of one of the unknowns in the system. I'm going to have Mr. Herasik go over to some of the details in the next slide, the next couple of slides, and kind of understanding a little bit more of what's involved in a school grade, a little more of the detail, and then I'll pick it back up again for the last portion.
So in your possession, you have a slide that looks like this, and it's just going to tell you the elementary, middle school are the same, and then it gets different when you go to high school. And I just want to talk about that. So if you look at up on the screen. So if you look at up on the screen, current standing, school improvement, improvement of higher performing and improvement of lower performing, and opportunity to learn, those are the same for elementary, mid, and high school. So those categories are the same, but if you notice, they're weighted different. If you look at the elementary and mid-school, current standing is worth 40 points. High school, it's worth 30. It's the same for school improvement. You look at the highest performing kids, you get more points in elementary and mid than you do high school. Improvement of lowest performing, it's worth more in elementary, mid than it is high school. And then opportunity to learn is 10 points in elementary, mid-school, and eight points in high school. Then where the grade differs is, for high schools only, you have graduation rate figured in, you have college and career readiness. So those two categories are different than they are for the elementary and mid-schools. And I provided you with two schools on the next slide. Just what it looks like for real on the actual school grade. You have, looks like, does yours say Lincoln Elementary? Yeah, so you have Lincoln Elementary and you have Sagai. And I'm just showing you the breakdown of how they do that, that they're different for elementary, mid-schools as opposed to high school. And the key difference is the graduation rate and college and career readiness.
And I also want to add, there's a few other little pieces. For example, opportunity to learn. All students are given a survey and they're asked how well, basically how well their teachers are doing, how well the school's doing to educate them. They actually get to, that's a part of the score also. So students are a part of that process, not only in their scores, but also in the survey that they complete before, during the test that they take in the spring. And as I mentioned before, graduation rates and as mentioned here, there's lots of other little pieces that you will see. I provided a document towards the end of your packet that kind of, you can see it all in one shot. So you can see every school like this in every single area and what their score, what their grade was for each area. So that gives you a real quick overview of where your schools are at. You can find your schools quite easily.
So the bonus points is where the parental involvement comes? Some of the bonus points.
Yes, it's reducing truancy, promoting extracurricular activities, engaging families, and using technology for high schools.
So those are submitted by the school principals and the schools. And those are submitted and the state actually weights those and puts those into the grade. So there's some extra little areas where you can get more points. And we actually do pretty well when it comes to bonus points as a district in receiving those. The next page, the next slide gives you a grade distribution for the schools. As you know, and I'll talk a little bit more about the details of that. And again, we took a bit of a hit this year. And so overall, I'm talking on average, the school grades, a lot of them stayed, I mean, not exactly, but about a third went down, a third about stayed the same and a little less than the third went up. So it was right about in that range, which is similar to last year. And a lot of these schools change grades. The same A's, not the same A's we had last year and the same is last year. So there's some funky stuff that happens when they rank the schools that we have to pay attention to. But we are excited for some of the successes on the school grade. I'll go over those, also talk about some areas and things that we learned from this grading system that is going to help us in the future and what we're specifically doing to target some of these areas. So the next slide talks about some of the successes. This year is the first time we've had three A's in Gallup McKinley County Schools. And so those three schools are Lincoln Elementary, O'Nate, and Sagai, the high school. And so that's an accomplishment. Last year, I think we had two, the year before. I'm not sure that we had one the year before, if I remember right. But I'll have to double check. Also, the highest growth rate, and that's kind of interesting too. The three A's were not the most growth according to school grade. Actually, Reema Elementary was the most growth in one school year according to the school grade. And they received a B, but they went from a D to a B. Over the last three years, 80% of the schools are improved, which is a positive thing. And then Sagai, for the first time in, I think, the history of Gallup McKinley County Schools, we have a school in the top 100. And that is an accomplishment and a move in the right direction. And they're ranked number 78 of approximately 1,000 schools in the state of New Mexico. So we're excited for them. They're doing some great things that we're going to piggyback off for our other high schools and county high schools. And then, oh, here comes the helicopter. There it goes. The next one is, as mentioned when we did our last data update and the state also acknowledged this, is that Gallup McKinley County School surpassed, has continually surpassed the growth rate for the state. Some, even though some schools may get a higher grade, we're really focused on the growth. And that's what we want to pay attention to throughout all years. Is that we are continually to grow faster or more than one year's worth of growth in a single year. We don't want students just to become one more level proficient, or not one proficient, but one year of growth. We want it to be more than one year of growth or you're never going to catch up. And so that's a focus for our school district. And I mentioned that to the principals today. You know, there's some, there's some things that we can't always predict with the school grades, but stay focused on every single student's scores and how you can help individually them become better. That's where you have to stay focused. Don't get upset because, you know, your grade didn't go up as high. Focus, if you can show that you are growing your students more than one year's worth, that's what we're looking for. And you're going to see results from that. And then as I mentioned in that last meeting, we have 709 students more proficient over the last three years, about a third of those each year, which is a positive thing for Gallup McKinley County Schools. We have been, we were the lowest in the state in the past with respect to scores. And we are no longer at the bottom. And so we've got to continue to move up. The thing I am focused on is we've got to move faster. We are growing fast, but we need to do a better job still.
Mr. Hyatt?
On your last success of the 709 students, I think that it also needs to be mentioned that not every student in Gallup McKinley County takes this exam. Because when I was mentioning this to a parent, they were like, you know, why, why in three years, all we got was 709 students? That's not even out of the 15,000 kids we have. You know, why is that so low? And then, you know, I had to tell her, not every student in our district takes this exam. There's only certain grade levels that take this exam. That's where we're getting that number from. So it's not the whole student body.
Correct. Yeah, it's not 11,500 approximately students that were. There's another test for ICE stations, which is a new test that students take, K-2. And so it's, there's other things that are factored into the school grade, even more so than just the park. So, and then again, some students don't take the park. Seniors, for example, don't take the park. On areas in need of improvement, and again, we talked about this with principals today. One of the areas, the school grade's broken in one part on growth, that your top 75% performing students and your bottom quartile of students in performance. And you get more points for your top, or less points for your top 75% than you do. The students that are weighted, are in the bottom 25% are weighted more if you help them grow. And so one of the areas, we found that we're doing okay as far as our growth with the 75%, but our bottom 25%, we did not do very well. It's been a, it's been a pattern. And so we're working on strategies, not only as a district, but also asking principals to really dive into that data to find out what those students need. We cannot leave the bottom 25% behind. We have to get them growing at a faster rate. And again, it's weighted high also on the school grade.
And just a quick, the state tells you who those bottom 25% are. They give you a report by each school and they tell you who those students are to target them when it comes to instruction.
I would like to just say also, on the lowest 25%, you know, our former board member, Mr. Hiddeman, he kept telling us, you know, what are we doing for the lowest performing student in our district? You know, what are, how are we reaching them? What are we doing to get them to start that growth? I'm sorry. You know, that was his concern, was what are we doing to help our students that are in that 25%? And I, and I'm so glad to see this. And I think if he was here, he would be glad to hear what you just said. Also, that, you know, what are we doing district-wide? And what are our principals and all the way up doing to help these? Because what he was saying, and if we look back to some of his comments, I think the 25% were, majority of them were Native American. And he was asking, what are we doing to assist these individuals? And the teachers, and of course, and the principals also. And I'm so glad that that's on there at this time. Just in, we're now starting to reach out to really deepen and focus on this 25%.
And part of it, Ms. Mangalito, is teachers got to know who those 25% are. They need to know who all their students are. But there needs to be, pay some particular attention to the bottom 25%. If you don't know those names, you don't know those scores and what those specific needs are, you're probably not going to put any extra effort into those students because you don't know. And so that's one of the things definitely that we're going to be doing is making sure that every teacher knows who those 25% are in their classroom as a requirement. And so again, we're working on some strategies in order to get that implemented and make sure that we, it's in teachers' hands and they're working together for improvement with the staff and the principal. Areas of improvement, obviously proficiency rates. Again, we're focused on growth, but we know that even if we get any proficiency, new proficiency in the district, it's going to help us also and help our students, of course. Graduation rate is also, has always been a struggle. And that's an area that I kind of coupled with the next bullet, college and career readiness opportunities. We do a good, we do fairly well with a certain population of students, but we have a lot of students who, whether they become disinterested in school for a variety of reasons, or maybe it's too easy or too hard, or it's not interesting enough or whatever it might be. We need to look at more opportunities to challenge and to provide that right level of rigor for each individual student. And that comes in different forms. If students know that in high school, they can work on a certification to go into a certain work field, work readiness program, so they can get into a job by after high school, we need to provide those opportunities for them. They may know now that I don't want to go to college. We also have those students that are ready to do more dual credit and opportunities in college and potentially even earn an AA degree or other credits that can further their career as far as their program of study when they go to college. There's more things we can do as a district to help those students. And so what I hate to see is when a student is not challenged or is not being paid enough attention to, and then they don't see school as interesting and not beneficial for them. We've got to change that and we've got to do a better job as a district at meeting those students' needs. And then the last area, an area in need of improvement, is curriculum and assessment. And I'll talk about that in a minute on the next page.
Sir, what is our graduation rate at this time?
I believe it's around 61 or 62% for four years. And then it goes into the 80s for six years. So they actually give you more points, or less, more points for four years and then you get less points when a student graduates in five years and then less when they graduate in six. But we track all of that information. And that's why programs such as SNAPs and those types of entities can be helpful to us. We have done a better job at reducing, for example, expulsions and those types of things over the last few years. And we're continually working on that. And you're going to have a better chance if you can keep students in school. And so unless it's something severe, we're trying to avoid expulsion at all costs. And so some of our strategies for improvement, I've already touched on some, but I want to make sure that we understand, even in these last three years of growth, we've never had a curriculum for reading and mathematics K through 12, kindergarten through 12th grade. This is the first year that we're rolling out an actual curriculum, K-12, that is aligned to the standards. And so we are very excited about that. That, to have that kind of growth without a curriculum is actually an accomplishment. Unfortunately, a curriculum is necessary. You need that to give that map for teachers and for students. Also, we've had an assessment, a decent assessment, but we believe the new assessment that you approved for this year, SchoolNet, is a better assessment. It is aligned, it's actually produced by the same company that produces the park test.
So the curriculum that you just talked about that is new and created here, is that implemented at this time or is it going to be implemented?
It's already started, the implementation process. And so not only is it a rollout, but also it's a, the accountability of that program, making sure that lesson plans and those types of things are aligned to the curriculum, which is obviously aligned to the standards and prepares those students for the park exam. So that's a continual process, but that's new for this year. And it can be tweaked, it's a living document. So if we find areas that we could do better with that, we will. Now, school, we do it, we do it in chunks for every nine weeks. Teachers and staff are able to work on whatever standards those are for those nine weeks in whatever order they want. But we have certain pacing that we have for those standards throughout the school year to prepare students for the park exam. And also, so the assessment, the assessment is better aligned. It's the same company that produces the park test, so that students are going to see like questions that they're going to see exactly on the park exam in a like format on the computer, which helps students become more comfortable with that type of testing. And again, specifically aligned to the park exam. And then also, we are focused on helping our principals do a better job at observation and feedback with our teachers. That's the primary purpose of our principals, is to make those teachers the best that they can be. And our job is to make principals the best they can be. And the principal's job is to help that instruction be the best it can be in the classroom. And that takes conversations. And that takes going through classrooms and seeing what's good and what things could be improved. And so that's one of our main focus areas for this school year. We also have, and I attach these in another document in the back, we set clear written targeted expectations for our principals. It's not just verbal. We actually put it in writing so that principals know what we expect out of them and the parameters we've set for them, so they have clear guidance on what we're expecting this school year from them in their schools. And then also, like I mentioned before, we're working on a strategy to target those lowest performing 25%. And I don't have anything yet that we specifically rolled out, but the curriculum instruction team is looking at that now because we saw this as a weakness relative to school grades. So if there are any, any other questions, comments, anything else you'd like me to present on, possibly in the future regarding scores or school grades from last year?
Questions, comments?
I, I would, sir. Thank you. I think with your new direction and strategies for improvement on curriculum, I think that's something that's going to be very, I think we'll see a big difference in that, having that structure in place. I think that will be very beneficial to our educational system. And the main thing that I really been advocating a lot, because I see it a lot with the job that I do and the job that these ladies do when they come and talk about their presentation and the report they provided us, is the career ready, the college and career readiness. I'm glad we're leaning more into that, into giving that opportunity to our students and providing those resources for them. And I just, I just think with the new person that we did hire in this position, you know, I, I know he's over, I went to see him a few weeks ago and he seemed like he was getting on track and he was ready to tackle this big, this big job on. But I think if, sorry, I think we're really going in the right direction with these opportunities. And I think every growth that our children fulfill should be celebrated. And I see the statistics of what you said about the park. And, but I, we, it bothers me that they judge our schools by those grades when we know the capability and the hearts of some of these teachers and professionals that work in these schools that go above and beyond. And, you know, we, we look at these grades and we know that all of our schools are doing so much better than what is predicted in the grades. And when Mr. Secretary Assistant, or not, Acting Secretary came, you know, we thought that these two schools that they would score or have the grades to show that, how would you say it? Reflect the award he gave us. You know, I mean, it was a big accomplishment, but I don't understand why it doesn't reflect that in the grade. And, you know, I mean, I know there's all these formulas and everything, and that's what I mean. You know, we see our schools shine in our own eyes when we go visit them, but it's, you know, just one test shouldn't determine that within our school district. A couple of questions or kind of, a couple of things I wanted to ask. One, I forgot right now, but the other one was, you know, with the, when are the teachers that are, reached these goals and increased their, worked really hard in their classroom and met some expectations with their, when do they get their stipends or the?
Performance pay.
Yeah. And is that, does that, does this determine that or is that something else?
Yes, it is part of their evaluation, the growth of their students over the past three years. And so that is out, I believe the scores are. Is that? And so that is out, I believe the scores are. Is that accurate for teachers?
Mr. Long, members of the board, Ms. Manuelito, you approved those funds this evening for us to begin that process.
But as far as this teachers, the teachers' scores came out just recently, this last week. So we have the scores you've approved. It's called For Our Futures now. They don't call it Performance Pay. And so that is the money we received, a little over a million dollars, that we're gonna be giving out. So not only do teachers that score high on their, their, their scores or their evaluation will receive extra funds for themselves, but also a school that grows a certain amount, every staff member in that school also receives an award or a performance pay, what we call it. Whether it's the custodian, or the secretary, or teacher, or principal, et cetera, they all get the same amount of money for their performance. So some schools will be receiving that also.
So you want me to share the two schools with them?
Sure.
So Rema Elementary and Juan de Onyate are gonna get that whole school, Performance Pay? And then the teacher, the teacher's educator affecting the score, they're embargoed until September 18th? And then once they're unembargoed, we can move forward on the ones that meet the criteria for their Performance Pay?
My last question, sir, I just remembered it, was, of course, the biggest complaint I get from the students is the testing. And I know we did away with one, was it the TL testing, but we, there's another one that we picked up in place of that. Is, is there, was there anything you guys can do to look at all those, to see which one? I, I know my, I know the answer I'm gonna give, but I, I just have to ask. Is, did we could just eliminate to not test our kids so much?
President Long, members of the board, Priscilla, Ms. Manuelito. We do minimize that, but it is a valuable piece of our ability to assess students and curb our instruction so we can meet their needs. If you don't ever assess, we could, if the state allowed us, we could drop, there's, I mean, even the SchoolNet or the TLI test that you're referring to, we could drop it, sure. But we would never know whether students are progressing towards that, what they can accomplish on that park test. No, we would never know. We're just gonna use informative information that may not tell us a lot. So we only do it three times in the school year, and then we have the park test. And it was called interim assessments, and then obviously teachers have their own testing. So we've minimized it, I think, as much as, as we can as a school district. Most testing though is also regulated by the state, and they, they have also asked us about whether we want it reduced, and overwhelmingly in the meeting I was in with the superintendents, yeah, you can reduce it, the time, the time it takes to take a test, but specifically the park test, that'd be very beneficial. Also, if you can move that park test later in the year, so we have more time for instruction before that exam, they also listen to us then, and they are also making adjustments there. So the state listens to us, and we do advocate to make sure it's an appropriate amount of testing the best that we can. But yeah, our students, especially here, when you're talking about weighted testing, there's other things that we have to test on. It does take up some time, but again, it's that, not everybody takes all the tests. Some of those tests are for different cohorts of students. So sometimes it seems like a lot of testing. It's really not quite as much as sometimes we perceive.
And I want to add one more thing to the interim piece, the TLI piece that we're now doing at SchoolNet is, if you compare other districts that don't do that with their students, you will see that we are significantly outperforming them when it comes to growth on the park. So it's pretty valuable. And one thing I want to clear up is it's September 8th for the teachers, for those to be unembargoed, not September 18th?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
In, in this, like for the, the high school, the high schools especially, it talks about college and career readiness. Do we, is, is there any way to capture maybe any information about if the students want to go to college? And how many of them are accepting college or entering college, or is there, is there any way to quantify any of these types of things? How many of them, how many of them go straight into the workforce, for example?
We can provide that data for you, what we have. The state also tracks that, students, but it's not a perfect science. We don't always be able to track every single person, but we can get some basic idea of what students are doing after high school, and how, or how long they stay in college, maybe drop out, or want to last the full four years or two years. So we, we can get that information for you. I don't have it on hand right now. But yeah, the goal of the whole plan when students are in high school is to prepare them for what they want to do after high school. And that's an area that I still don't think we're doing enough as a district. We need to start that, not even in the high school level. I was at Rema Elementary. They were starting, and I know other elementarys are doing the same thing. They're doing explorations of colleges even in first grade now. They have found that the sooner a student starts looking at what they want to do and talking about college and those opportunities that they have after high school, the better they are able, better they are able to get that in their mindset, that they want to prepare themselves for that type of a career when they leave. And so it's not enough anymore just to start talking about it in high school or middle school. We're actually starting to have those discussions at the elementary level. Thank you.
Any other questions? Finish? Let's go down to item number five, Board Reports. Any reports from board members?
Mr. President, in the, I guess just in the interest of, of time, I have nothing to report at this time as well.
Okay.
Nothing significant to report, I should say.
I just attended a few meetings on August 26th. Mr. Hyatt and Mr. Clark, the new principal from Crumpford High School, we went to the Eastern Navajo Agency Council meeting at N'ezo Sakha, or even N'ezo. And it was a good, a good meeting. It's the officers from 31 chapters in the eastern agencies. We meet on a quarterly basis. And Mr. Hyatt just provided a brief report to the council, and we got a great reception from the council. On the 28th, I went to the Mariana Lake Chapter Meeting. There's an issue there regarding a road going into Navajo Housing Authority subdivision, housing division. And we've been trying to help the chapter address the one road going in and out of that housing area. The chapter wants to have another exit, so we're still working with that. On the 29th, I attended the Resource and Development Committee of the 23rd Navajo Nation Council at my own chapter, the Centi. And I brought up issues about bus routes needing regular maintenance, and then also brought up concerns about the bridges within our school district. And basically, what they said is, you know, that they're looking at, I guess, spending money, appropriating monies to do road repairs, road grading, and repairing bridges. On September 1st, I went to the public hearing on TTIP, TTIP, which has to do with the Navajo Nation's plan. I believe it's the fire plan on all the roads across the Navajo Nation that they're gonna improve, the bridges that they're gonna work on and all that. And I got the information, and Mr. Hyatt is gonna review the listing on the bridges, listing on, on the bridges within our school district, and see what type of, or the amount of funding that they appropriated for those bridges. So, that's my story. Okay, we go to item number six, notices. Oh, the other thing I forgot is, I guess it's Saturday that they had the cross-country meet at Theru? Right?
Yes.
And I believe that Vice President of the Navajo Nation, Jonathan Mas, was there.
Yes, he was.
Did you say anything to him? Number six is notices and communication. September 18th, Parent Teacher Conference at Twin Lakes. October 2nd, our Board of Education meeting. October 11th, in first quarter, reporting day. October 12th and 13th, fall break. That's what we have. Old business, there's none. Let's go down to new business, item A.
I'm trying to remember why we want to change this date.
Yeah, we have Parent Teacher Conference.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Yes, Parent Teacher Conference is on the 18th. Yeah. Thank you for keeping us on, Mr. Martins. Uh, yes, so we'd, we'd like to see if the board would like to move that, that way, if parents want to attend or watch the board meeting, or I know some of us have kids in school also, so we can attend our Parent Teacher Conferences, to move it to September 19th, if that's okay.
But that's Mr. Martinson's birthday.
That's why. So we have cake along with the meal.
I don't want that to have any bearing on your vote. Vote your conscience.
I have no objections to moving to the 19th, and I make a motion that you approve the 19th.
Okay, motion's been made to have our next Board of Education meeting on the 19th. Location, Twin Lakes, Rook Hall, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Has the school been notified of the change, possible change?
After the change.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Martinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
That's good. Okay. Yeah. Item B, open meeting.
President Long, members of the board, this was an item that was brought up for, something to discuss potentially adding or changing dates for board meetings. And so I think it was, Mrs. Manuelito that.
Yes, board members, I, I asked Mr. Hyatt to put this on the agenda. I've had a couple of requests, and I, I, one's my request, one, for the meeting in December, the first December meeting, December 4th, I would like to change that from the boardroom to Theru High School. And I spoke with Mrs., Mr. Senna, and he's in agreement, and he would like to host us on that, on that meeting. The next one will be in May, no, yes. May either the 7th or the 21st in Rema at the New Elementary School. It doesn't matter which one.
Board members, I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that the meetings that we're gonna have out at the county, those have been pretty much advertised. And I think if we add two more, we're gonna have six meetings out at the county and six here at the boardroom.
What are you talking, I don't understand, sir.
Well, we already have, I think, we go through a cycle. You know, every, every meeting that we have out at the county, the board meetings are rotated to be held at the different schools out at the county. And, and I'm not sure when Rema and Theru is scheduled.
No, sir.
They're not set schedule.
We don't have a schedule like that, sir. If the schools request for us to be out, if they would like to host us at the, at their school, then we try to accommodate that the best way we can. We don't, we, I know in the past, I know Joan or past superintendents had looked at different schools that have not, like we haven't been to a school for a long time, they would schedule us in that area. I know there's something like that, but if we request to have, if one of our schools requested us to come out, we would try to accommodate that, but there's no rotation or schedule to that effect. So I, I'll just go ahead and mark, May 7th, I'll just put, I, they didn't care which one, but I'll, I'll put marks, on May 7th, Rema Elementary.
Board members?
I think we already have the schedule set for this year, if they want to put it on for next year.
I, I really don't see a problem with them, especially if they're requesting. And I think that if a school is requesting that they would like to have the board come out and have a meeting, you know, I think that we should try to accommodate that. And even the schedule is made, you know, nothing's set in stone here, and we can change the, the schedule if the school would like to invite us out.
This was just a discussion item, then?
And I would like to put it on the next agenda item as an action item, but I think one thing that I would like to continue to remind us is that, you know, it, it's a struggle for some of our parents to get to our meetings. And I think if, there, there shouldn't be nothing wrong with us going to them at times. We're not doing this at every board meeting. We're not doing this all the time. These are certain dates. And I'm sorry, board members, but this is something that you said that you would help your constituents with, and we just can't have our meetings here at the boardroom all the time. And we need to get out to our communities, especially if they're requesting for us to be there. I, I get these requests every year, and, you know, there's times when we should accommodate our parents and let them have a say during the public comment. Yes, there may be times when it's like this, nobody, it may just be us. But if you remember in Theru, we had a lot of people there. When we went out to Navajo, we had a lot of people there, and they didn't come until after 5:00. And I think we need to continue to do that. If, if, if this is something that we're asked to do, I think we should accommodate. And I would really like to request, again, that we have this as an action item with these changes. These are the changes that I'm requesting is for Theru High School and for Rema Elementary School.
Okay, you mentioned in your presentation that the school wanted us, then you're saying our constituents, who's asking?
Both.
I guess we can still talk about it, and maybe we'll have it on the next meeting's agenda.
So I would like to ask, since this is still a discussion item, and for the record, I would like it to be noted, why our board members are I would like it to be noted why our board members are not wanting to go out to the local communities. And I would like that documented also.
I don't think it's a matter of the board not wanting to go out there, but I think the meeting schedule for the county has already been set.
As mentioned, sir, this is a working document, just like our budget is. And we have the authority to change this if we see fit. And I would really recommend that we accommodate our constituents, our parents, our students and our principals to assist them in this manner.
I think that's where as board members, we come in to share information at chapter
Sir, not all of our constituents go to chapter meetings. And some of our board members don't go to chapter meetings. So, this is a way that we give back to our community as dedicating our time and ourselves to go to these meetings and to the communities.
I gave my report on the meetings I go to. How about you? Did you go to any meetings?
Yes, I did, sir. But just like all the other board members, I was wondering, I just was reserving my time because I do attend a lot of meetings. But if you want me to give my report, I can. But I just wanted to give some time, more time to certain other areas at this meeting. And that's why I reserve my time at that time, sir.
Well, we'll go ahead and still consider this. We'll take it under advisement. Now, let's go to item C.
President Long, members of the board, you'll see the first part of your, first part of your packet for action item for JSAC. We have the agreement for JFK and also Chief in there. They're identical. We already reviewed these as a district and we feel comfortable with the agreement and propose that it be approved.
I motion to approve, sir.
Okay, motions been made. Ro Khall, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Martinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Okay. That concludes our business for this evening. And I want to thank the assistant superintendents for being here. I always forget to, to appreciate you coming over to express my appreciation. Yeah. With that, I make the motion that we adjourn. The motion's been made to adjourn. Ro Khall?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Martinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.